All right, good evening. The zoning board of adjustment meeting on October 22nd, it's 6:30. Uh, roll call is as follows. We have Pam Sanderson, President, Justin Miller, Brenda DiMadio, myself, Matt Fowler. First part on the agenda is typically minutes, but before we do that, we've got a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight, a lot of cases. So at 8 o'clock, we're gonna take a break for five minutes, and then at 9 o'clock, whatever case that we're working on will be the last case of the night, even if we finish two minutes afterward, because we want to get everybody out of here by 9:30. We're all volunteers, and we want to be able to get to work tomorrow.
May I bring something up, just so the board's aware of it? Uh, case 1808, the last case, is very time-sensitive. They have a issue that's occurring right now with, uh, that they're hoping to be able to complete while the weather is still with us, regarding that retaining wall, it's having an issue on site. Uh, I agree with Matt, there's not a lot of time tonight. Something else you may want to consider is, I know that's the board's typical procedure, but I would suggest that you also consider 6:30 now, till, let's say, you want to go till 9:30, that would give you 45 minutes per case. Otherwise, you could get, there's two cases on tonight that are very involved, including the first one. Uh, so, and I had spoken to the engineer for the last one, as well as, I'm aware that there's an engineer coming for 1807, who's, I guess, I saw him come in, so, uh, consider the idea of maybe 45 minutes, and that would give everybody a 45-minute block of time, and then decide if you want to continue and have another meeting to continue the rest of it, or continue them to next month.
Do we have?
I really would have a concern that you'd be able to hear them in full, just because of the volume of work you have tonight.
Casey, is everybody, you said 1806, you thought you saw somebody come in?
Uh, 1806, I haven't seen him. 1807, I did see drive in, uh, he may be outside talking to his company. Uh, in 1808, I did speak via email with him today, and he was going to, he said, "Would seven be early enough?", and I said, "Yes", because he's last on the agenda. But he is driving here, uh, from another area of the state as well. So in fairness to everybody, I thought that might be a consideration. I mean, not that you have to hold it down to the wire, but-
It's not like they have to finish their case and work.
Right. If you go an hour each, you're looking at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night.
I think, given the current caseload and the future caseloads for winter, might not be a bad idea. At least try it.
And some may go less than 45.
Exactly.
Yeah, and you can determine at that point if you're close or not, uh-
Is this something we'd have to vote on?
No, you just, just go forward with just that thought, and, you know, you have a different option, you know, you can just kind of check it out as the time goes along.
Sure.
Uh, you may want to decide to do site walks, which would bump it up-
Right.
Uh, to another meeting anyway.
Possibility, certainly.
As you get into them, you can take them as they, as they come.
Have we had a lot of applicants for next month?
No.
All right.
That doesn't mean a lot between now and the end of the month, but usually, I get an indication. There's several potential, small, residential, maybe short, a little on-frontage type thing, but I don't know of any big projects.
Uh, is everybody cool with trying that tonight?
No, Justin would be.
Um, so the second part of, the start would be minutes. Does everybody have a chance to go over the minutes?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, or motions?
Uh, I have a correction, but we need a motion first. So, motion to accept the minutes.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Not if there's a correction being made. You have to have a motion first, and second, then discussion.
And then you can amend.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Errors and omissions, yeah, right in the beginning, the variance, in the middle of the page, where it says, "A variance to Article, uh, eight-"
123.
Right, yeah, there's, there's, there were three original, including that, that section 4C, and then it is, uh, section 4B, which was added on August 30th.
Oh.
So Article, and then it says, "Article Linda Smith", who is not in Article.
I know.
So Article, uh, 6D, section 4C belongs up in that first line, and then the same thing, but with subsection B, is the new one that was added. So we had three, uh, three articles to start, and we, and they added the subsection B on top of subsection C, which was already here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? That was my only change.
All right.
So then you just vote as amended?
Yep. So call the vote.
On favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, case 1804.
Good evening.
Good thanks.
So typically, what we do is, give you guys five minutes, kind of give us a brief overview of what you're trying to do with the property, and, um, we'll go through, around the table and ask you questions, and then we'll get to the five questions, or get to five questions, and kind of go from there.
Sure. Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Sharon Summers, I'm with John Hugh Tucker and Shindela, I'm here tonight representing Northwood. Um, first of all, thank you for, um, being here tonight. I know it's tough when you have a, scrambling to have a, something close to a full board, and we appreciate people coming out. Um, we are here tonight for a four-lot subdivision, and the relief that we seek is, in part, based upon residential density, and the fact that this is a, um, pre-existing non-conforming lot, and we would be, um, increasing the non-conforming aspect of the existing manufactured, um, housing park. In addition to that, one of the provisions of the overlay district that we happen to be in, which is the wellhead protection district, also calls for an open space design. So that's also one aspect of the relief that we're seeking. So essentially, it's two items, or two classes of items. One is relief the requirement that this be designed in an open space configuration, and then, secondly, the, uh, the density. So what we'd like to do here tonight, um, consistent with what, um, the chairman just said, is to present a, a brief overview. Um, Chris Albert, the engineer, will be doing that. We also have, um, Fred Ramey, who's the developer in this case, he's here to answer any particular questions that we can't. And then what I'll do to sort of round things out, is just to address the, the five variance criteria, which are all in the, the written comments that you already have, but I'll just do that for the record. Okay, so, all yours.
Thank you. Again, for the record, my name is Chris Albert, I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers, the project manager, I'm a licensed septic designer, wetland scientist, uh, grade 1A water system operator, erosion control specialist, and project manager. I was gonna kind of work with the board and kind of run you through the project and where we are. Thank you.
Sure.
So this is just kind of a color rendering, aerial photography to kind of overlay again. You've got Loop 4, uh, out on the front parcel, which accesses the park, and then you've got Bow Street, which is again where we're looking to do the four-lot subdivision with the remaining parcel. So this park was created in 1985, plus or minus of the drawings that we have. Uh, it's been in Fred's family's since, since that time, uh, his father started the park, and he's a retained ownership. Uh, it's 45 acres with 59 units, it has three community leach fields, and a, uh, two wells for a community water system. Again, kind of nice, nice kind of color overlay to get people orientated, assuming everyone's kind of familiar with the, the site.
Sorry, how many units did you say?
There's 59 existing in the park. And again, the key component for the board to remember is that we're not trying to increase any more units in the park, what we're trying to do is, again, kind of draw a line in the sand and create for units on their own merit.
Um, do you have a GPS location for the Bow Street side? Or something that would give us a, um, locale of that?
I could get that.
Yeah, I was unable to, I was unable to find it.
Oh, okay.
I found Bow Street and all, but I wasn't quite sure if I was looking at the piece of property.
Yeah, so you've got 167 Bow Streets on the opposite side, uh, 131, 167. Again, this plan, uh, was prepared by our licensed land surveyor in the company, and I, I think a quick narrative is really to kind of run down the denial letter, uh, that was provided last year by the building department, and kind of how we've worked since November to kind of get to where we are today. Uh, I know a key component back then is, because it was a draft plan, is, you know, you're looking for a certified plot plan, so again, we've conducted a full boundary survey on the piece to make sure we had acreages correct, abridges correct. So again, that was prepared by our licensed land surveyor, Dave Collier. Uh, again, it is a non-conforming lot, which we're aware of. Uh, there was item, uh, the third item was unknown of wetland, uh, wetland areas, so myself, as a wetland scientist, I went out and delineated the wetland systems through the piece, so we knew actually what the elbow room was and the setbacks were, and that the survey crew followed behind to pick that up. Uh, steep slopes, I will actually kind of skip through D2, and just kind of acknowledge steep slopes, everything over 25%. Kind of, this is kind of a busy drawing, so I wanted to kind of go through. These hash marks are all these steep slopes. So we've identified all the steep slopes in the existing park, and then those four lots again. So we're hoping tonight, with blessing and approval of this board, that when we go to the planning board, these four lots are gonna stand on their own merit, meeting your standards as they are. Uh, one concern that they had on note one was existing structures, so they were concerned about the existing leach field in the back, and that 20-foot setback, which we provided, uh, which was, yeah, which was, and then, of course, all other structures on that. Kind of going back to what the key on the overlay district boundaries, I wondered, I did some research, I want to pass these out to, thank you. Um, again, you know, looking at, uh, 4D2 overlay district, you know, it talks about, you know, RSA 485-1 at the, at the last sentence, I was like, "Well, what is RSA 485-1?". All it really is, is a note that any system over, uh, 15 units or 25 people shall have a, a community water system. So we've, we've located the two wells, again, they've got, uh, two wells that produce over 38,000 gallons of, uh, a day. Right now, their usage is at 6,000 gallons a day, so the well production is well-sustained to keep the 59 units without any issues, and I can kind of go over the remaining lot area. The other issue that you had in, uh, the district is talking about the transversivity of soil, so I did some research, and I was able to pull, so the first sheet you have is the kind of cover sheet for your groundwater stratified map sheet, and then I have a little drawing sheet in there that kind of shows, uh, where your stratified drifts are, which aren't really connected to the site at all, and then there's a table in the third sheet that shows, Northwood is kind of a low-yielding municipality, only about 2% of your town has, uh, wells. So, being an environmental scientist, one thing we look at is, all right, so we have, we have 45 acres, we're gonna take approximately eight, eight to 10 acres out, we're gonna leave 38 acres back, what's that gonna leave for the 38 acres? So what we've done in our table, we've done, uh, what's called soil lot loading calculations to show that the 38 acres, the big thing is, we don't, we don't want to take away the ability for the existing mobile home park to stand, stand alone on its own merit, as far as the septic systems. So with the 38 acres lot loading calc, it's actually allows us to do 35,000 gallons a day. So the 38 acres is ample supply to keep the existing 59 acres. The other thing we look at then, is our groundwater wells. Uh, I've got two wells that, again, produce about 38,000 gallons a day, but then I start looking at, from a watershed perspective, you know, in New Hampshire, we look at 43 inches of rain per year. If we take that, and we look at, say, a 50% uh, transversivity and evapotransportation and runoff, that leaves about 44 million gallons a year, which is about 60,000 gallons a day, uh, surplus on the 38,000, uh, 38 acres. So we're using 6,000, so again, we want to make sure we're not cutting back required amount of water capacity for the park. So, again, and then looking at the, the four lots, we make sure the steep slopes, uh, wetland setbacks, the furnages, uh, all comply as far as having, uh, the required areas, so they'll be, again, after tonight's hopefully blessing, we'll move forward to the planning board, uh, and we would not have to come back to this board, uh, these four lots would stand alone. That's, but I have any questions, and then, I believe Sharon was gonna keep going.
Questions?
Can you have the moment?
Thank you.
Now, I have a question, if I could ask one. The line that goes around the inside of the plan is, how many feet is that?
How many feet is the entire?
No, no, this line right here. Things that indicate.
That's your, your building setback? That's the 50-foot Mokee family setback for the existing park? From the site setback.
Okay, and the leach field is in the setback?
Well, it's, it's in the, it's not in the structure setback. I believe the way it's written, yeah, you've got two different lines, you've got a, a family Mokee family setback, but then you have a structure setback. So I believe the way we talked about it, that the leach field had to be out of the 20-foot structure setback.
Okay.
Um, I, so I just want to go over briefly, uh, and try to summarize, if I can, the, uh, the written arguments that are presented as to why we satisfy the variance criteria. And this, this happened in, in two parts. The original application was submitted in August, um, and then, uh, and that dealt with, um, the resident, the density requirements, and also the expansion of the non-conforming use. I then submitted, uh, sort of a supplement, if you will, at the end of August, and that was because, uh, we also needed to address the open space design requirement under the overlay district. So what I'd like to do is really to just talk about, if it's acceptable to the board, each of the criteria, but in that, uh, criteria, I will address all of those forms of relief that I'm gonna request, and obviously, if you have questions-
Usually, we'll do that, usually, we'll, we'll take up each variance and go through the five questions, and that would be your time, if you want to do that, or if you want to-
Do you want to, um, at this point, ask some preliminary questions from us, and then go into her questions?
Yeah, I think that'd be, yeah.
Sure. My question here is on, um, the residential density. Um, where we're coming down here, and we're adding in that wellhead overhead protection, um, excuse me. Um, it kind of seems, what I'm, I'm seeing, is, um, that in, um, the, uh, 6D4C in particular, that one of the first ones that you submitted, that residential density within this overlay district shall be reduced to one-quarter unit per acre. Um, and I see that you have eight acres, and I'm just wondering, one-quarter unit per acre would, would mean four acres for a home within this overlay district. Um, and I noticed your, your lot, um, delineation here, see, it's, it's an unusual triangulation with a lot of slope. Is there a reason that you could not be in conformity, um, by taking the two four acres, as opposed to requesting the four two-acre lots?
Um, well, a couple of things. First of all, as to the configuration, um, one of the things that you'll see is, as a result of Chris's efforts, uh, we were able to create lots which comply with the steep slope requirements, so the, uh, and Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong at any point, but the configuration that you see is, it is a direct result of our efforts to try to comply as much as we possibly could with the ordinance relative to steep slopes. Um, I guess to answer your question with regards to, uh, density, um, relative to this, this particular, um, element of the, the zoning ordinance, um, I, I guess what I would say is that the purpose of the wellhead protection overlay district is, among other things, to protect the existing sources of the water supply. That's, that's the driver behind the density language, uh, in, in the, in section D there, in addition to the other, uh, density requirements. And our argument is that the purpose of the ordinance, um, as well as the other criteria, are still addressed adequately by allowing us to have the four lots, because of our plan to supply water, and to supply water, to the four lots, and to supply water, which is not going to, um, impact or endanger the existing sources of the public water supply to the existing manufactured, um, park. So for that reason, uh, we believe that we are entitled to relief, uh, from, from the, uh, section that you cite, number C-
I'm looking at C, yep.
Uh, because of the fact that the, we believe that the purpose, um, of the ordinance has been satisfied in, in the proposal-
In the supply of water?
Yes.
That you're saying. Okay, I'm just looking at your slope, usable land and acreage site, also, particularly in the, um, I guess we got top, lot, D2, too? Um, with, you've got a wetland in there, you've got high slope, um, and, what are the, there was something else running through there. Um, it, it's, are, are we really sacrificing, um, this property, um, into two separate lots, when in particular, it would seem much better suited to be one? And I look at, at 82-2 and 82-1. I'm not quite, um, seeing the, the reasoning, while you can supply water to this area, um, for the purpose of the land and, um, any changes that occur to it, they're heavily restricted in what they could do and future do. Um, it's in terms of, um, any outbuilding sheds, um, any expansion, because of all that steep slope and that wetland, uh, with the wetland buffer. So it's, it's really a constricted property, um, as far as, as for a variance. So you're asking us to go to half on density on a lot that really is, got a lot of unusual, unusual, unusable land.
Right, and we, we, you know, we acknowledge that, that one or two of the lots may be less usable than others in terms of ancillary uses, such as, uh, the, uh, you know, sheds and that kind of thing, as you point, point out. But I believe that that issue is not the same as the analysis that needs to be done about this provision of the zoning ordinance. Um, so I, I guess that's the answer to the question. We, we believe that we satisfy the variance criteria, we acknowledge and appreciate your comments, that, uh, some of the lots may not be as, perhaps as desirable as others, due to the fact that they come with the steep slopes and whatnot, but that's really a marketing issue.
Right, well, that's, we won't go into marketing, because that's not, we're talking about the land.
Well, exactly, yeah.
So I guess, I guess what I'm holding to is, if you have the ability to be in compliance, why not go that way?
Well, I'm sorry, as far as basic local zoning for the town of Northwood, these four lots stand alone, comply with your regulations. So lot, uh, two that you talked about is actually almost three acres in size, total. Uh, so the net contiguous area, effective area is actually 91,000 square feet. So we're, I know you've got different levels of, of density, you know, for steep slopes, taking that out and taking every one. So again, we've spent a lot of time mathematically, angle-wise, trying to create for Mr. Ramey, again, originally, he wanted six lots, he went to five, and then, you know, make, I'm just, I'm just trying to say-
That's okay, no, no, that's all right.
-the level of effort to go, that, you know, we spent a lot of time to actually configure lots, stand alone, each one of these four lots meet the town of Northwood's requirements, stand alone on their own merit, with all of those restricted features.
Except that they need variances, because they don't need-
The only reason we're here for the variance is more of the, the non-conforming lot, and also the wellhead protection radius. But again, and I think that's why we demonstrated that, the 38 acres with a wellhead protection radius, the 1,300 square feet, which I've been trying to figure out, you know, again, the fathers, the town fathers, on why that was put in, you know, it's to protect somebody else's well, but, you know, our client owns the wells, and we're demonstrating that his wells are a-upgrading, so this work down gradient wouldn't interfere with them, but with the 38 acres, we're leaving ample water supply on the 38 acres stand alone, uh, to produce almost 38, uh, 38,000 gallons a day, we're only using six.
Right. Yeah, I, I believe, by what you have said, as far as your water, um, ability, availability, and usage, that you are being protective of the, um, existing trailer area at top. Um, again, my concern is with the land at the bottom, as the variance is decided and carries through with the land for, um, for the future. So my concern here is just, um, you know, are we, are we, if we do, are we squeezing out too much here, at the expense of the land? And, um, it just seems to be a very tight cut, um, and this is where I go into, I was not able to, um, exactly see, because I, I thought I was in the right, but I saw steep slope, um, I saw from Google another driveway, so I thought I was in the area, but I really did not walk it and go up through. So that, that is my one stumbling block right now.
I mean, as, as far as the 25% steep slope, they are, it is nice landscape, I mean, they're a nice white pine grove, so it is a nice usable back lot for somebody on their own, two-point, you know, 2.97 acre piece, the steep slope is just rolling hills with white pine. So to me, it's, it's not like it's a negative aspect of owning 2.97 acres.
Are you?
Hmm?
Are you, you can-
I'm all set. I'm all set. Um, not too much for the applicant, but for us, is there anything like, regarding the park, the paperwork that we should be looking at, the establishment of a water district that might refer to the total acreage?
Okay, let me, well, let me say one-
Do you understand my question?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I want to make sure that we're not violating a deal or something that might have been made in the past.
No, actually, the water district is not the same as this, it's a community water supply that services these homes. Uh, there's also septic systems, and I don't know, are those shown on the plan or not?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Existing leach fields are shown.
All the leach fields are shown, and the well radiuses are shown. Um, but one thing I wanted to just bring to the board's attention, when you were talking about the change in the residential density, is that in that open space concept, they're also asking for relief from that, and 33% of the land is to be set aside as open space. And I don't know if there's been any look at how much 33% of that original parcel is.
The open space, 33% that you're talking about, does that, is that derived from the original approval? I'm, I'm, I don't follow you where that 33% comes from.
The 33% would come from the original-
Approval?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Well, what do you mean by original approval?
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out what you're referring to. My, I know that the original approval did require some conservation area.
Well, that's, what happened was, it was that there was a, uh, there was a wetlands- Well, that's, what happened was, it was that there was a, there was a wetlands impact when the homes were put in the back, and I'm just going from memory now. DES cited the property owner at the time, and I don't know if it was junior or senior, but the, DES cited the property owner. The town went back and forth with the conservation commission relative to the fact that there were wetlands impacts. What was eventually decided was, it was a lot of back and forth about how it would be dealt with. The conservation commission said at a minimum, we wanted buffers. They actually wanted a conservation easement of the backland because of the wetland impacts. And then it ended up in, I don't know how specifically it ended up, but there is a plan that shows that there's twenty-five-foot buffers around the wetlands because at that point in time, we didn't have a wetlands buffer. How it ultimately ended up, I'm not sure because it went to the property owner. I think there may have been a fine in an agreement of some type, but there was never a settlement because the town was never provided a plan that was consistently asked for. So somehow, the property owner resolved their issue with DES without supplying that plan that was requested. The only thing we have is this plan which shows twenty-five-foot buffers around the Thirty-three percent, in other words, because, and you have to think about as one lot now because it is a parent lot, thirty-three percent of any parcel in an open space design, so basically that's saying thirty-three percent of that parent lot should be set aside as open space. What they're doing is taking.
Oh, I see what you're talking about now, okay.
Eight acres away.
Taking, actually, nine and a half.
Nine and a half, which is open space.
Away from that parent, that lot. And I think that's just an aspect that the board has to see as part of what they're asking for.
Well, and so, and I hope I'm not oversimplifying this, but we're looking at, the area outlined in blue is considered one lot right now.
Yeah, forty-five acres and change.
So if I have forty-five acres divided by fifty-nine units gives me point seven-six-three acres per unit. If I go ahead and take away that area of land, I have thirty-eight acres for fifty-nine units.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm making this lot more non-conforming.
That's right. Pretty much why we're here.
Yeah, so my big question is, I'm not sure I've understood why this property is different than any place else in Northwood that's going to make it the variance stick. It says, so, and I'm reading, for, no action should be permitted to change the boundary of a lot unless it brings it a lot closer to conformance with the ordinance, and it makes no other aspect of the lot and/or all structures more non-conforming.
So Chairman, I think what they're going to do is through their, through their answers to that criteria, present that case to you.
Okay.
So that, we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, it might, yeah, I'm happy to answer the question.
I'm jumping ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer the question, but it might be more helpful if we try to talk about the comments in the comments that Linda has just raised, if that's, if that's all right.
Sure.
I think if I, if I understand the gist of what's being talked about here, it is the open space design requirements under Article Nine, and the fact that if one is doing an open space design, that you have to have certain requirements. One is the thirty-three percent, where did this just go now? Thirty-three percent open space. And I guess what I would say in response to that is that, first of all, the only reason that we're even talking about open space is because we happen to be in the wellhead protection overlay district. And that overlay district in turn references the fact that if you're going to do something within the district, that you are required to do it in an open space design context. So our argument is essentially that, number one, we are in the district because we have a community well system, not because we have an aquifer. And we believe that's a very important distinction because that assists in our ability to address the next part of this, which is that the purpose of the ordinance is to protect the integrity of the community water system. And the current design is going to do just that. So in the context of how this is being raised, this open space design issue, it's being raised in the context of the fact that we supposedly need it because we are in the wellhead protection overlay district. If we are able through our design to satisfy the purpose, the underlying goals of that district, which is to protect the community water system which serves the park, then it seems to me that the insistence upon using the open space design really isn't going to do anything to further the purpose of that ordinance. And I'll look to Chris to maybe give some more concrete examples of this, but in fact, also to insist upon using the open space design would actually potentially impair the community water system because we, because of the way you would need to design the open space configuration, you would actually be getting improvements closer to the community system. Do I have that correct, Chris?
Yeah, so if you, if you looked at the four-lot subdivision as an open space clustered, we'd end up actually building an internal road and trying to cluster it all in that fashion, which to me, trying to put the four lots along the street as far as septic systems, their own private wells, driveways, minimizes the open space, more open space to the back of the parcel, and keeping most of all the lot development right along the existing Bow Street. You've got, you've got two different odd things here where you've got a grandfather manufactured home park overlaying onto your ordinances, so the shoe doesn't really fit too well, and that's again why we're here.
If I could just add one other comment, just so the board's aware of it, there are fifty-nine units, they've mentioned that.
Right.
That is the maximum that will go on the parent lot based on the septic system that is on the lot. That was agreed by the town and the owner that that's, there will be no more lots created, so they couldn't like add more on another part of it that was, that was all considered as part of the fifty-nine mobile home lots that are on there, is based simply on maximum capacity for the septic system that's in place. And I just want to mention one other thing to the board, which I'm sure the board knows, but I get a little concerned when I hear what were the town fathers thinking? This is a zoning ordinance that was presented by the planning board and was voted and approved by the voters. It was not something that was just put in place by the Board of Selectmen or those type of things.
Right. And also, I think the concern where the satisfaction of water, you still have the relevance of land, and part of the zoning and the zoning of Northwood in all is land. And certainly, water and water consumption, water use is important. So I see what you're saying, that you satisfy the criteria for variances based on water availability. I'm not sure we're at the land point. So again, with thirty-three percent as open space and this, almost nine acres, like almost nine, part of that open space and now fifty-nine homes on the existing grandmother lot, I'm wondering, yeah, boy, you're kind of packing those fifty-nine in where you had the extra acreage there, and also just the loss of open space. Roads and houses do not equate to open space.
Can I, can I just, can I just respond to some of that?
Sure, absolutely.
I could suggest at this point, it would be fair to the applicants to go through the criteria and allow them to present their thoughts and ideas so that, so they're, it's just not question and answers.
Right. And I'm concerned too that we seem to be sort of merging the various variance requests and not keeping separate in our minds what the purposes of the various sections of the ordinance, because I think that's critical for you to do in your analysis. So to try to respond to some of your comments, and then if it's acceptable to the chairman and members of the board, yes, and I think I will just walk through the summary of what's already in the written materials. But again, the open space issue comes up solely in the context of the wellhead protection overlay district. And if you look at that ordinance, that section of the ordinance, it does not address land per se. It talks about the protection of, where the heck did it go? The protection of the quantity and the quality of groundwater, and with a particular emphasis on protecting new or existing sources of public water supply. It does not talk about land. Now, certainly, we can talk about land in the context of the other forms of relief that we're talking about, but I think that your discussion about open space design has to be viewed through the requirements of the district from which this requirement springs, which is the wellhead overlay district. It's really not anything else. So it seems to me that we're talking about three separate things. We're talking about the fact that we are, A, going to increase the non-conforming aspect of the existing park because there are fifty-nine units there on a total parcel of X, and we are going to be increasing the density on the total of that parcel. That's number one. Number two, your basic density requirements call for a certain number of people per unit of land, and we are going to be exceeding that, so we need relief from that. And then the third piece of the relief that we need is because we happen to fall within the wellhead protection overlay district. So that's, that's the context in which I view our request for relief, and what I'd like to do at this point is just to walk through, and I think just to keep things separate, what I'm going to do is to walk through the criteria for the first forms of the variances, that is, the residential density and also then your pre-existing non-conforming use.
I think if you, is that the August first?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a little bit different order, but that would be fine. What we can do is, I can just start by reading the five questions, especially what you'd like to do, and go through that way. We'll start off with the first variance.
So you're going to ask me the questions, and then I'll just give you a summary answer based upon what I've written before?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep. And then before we vote, the board will have a chance to ask any more questions. And actually, I never asked about abutters as well before we vote on that as well.
Can I apologize for watching time?
Yes.
And then, and then what I'll do, just to make sure we're both on the same page, is that you're going to be asking the questions, I'll give you an answer in response to the first two categories of variances, and then we'll do a separate round for the wellhead. Is that correct?
I'm going to go variance by variance, each.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That just keeps it cleaner.
Sure.
So the first variance, and I apologize for cutting it short after we get through some of this, will be the application for variance from section six, D four B.
That's, that's wellhead, isn't it?
That's wellhead, yeah.
Yes, we have a little bit different.
You need to go non-conforming maybe? Seven, section C?
Yes.
Article seven, section C.
Could be first.
Do you have that, Matt?
I'm looking to follow along with hers.
Yeah, it doesn't all say it.
There's a reason that you have to fill out.
It's the one dated August.
You should have this.
Page one, okay.
Yes.
All right. This variance will not be contrary to the public interest because.
With regard to the non-conformity, what I would say is that the proposed subdivision is a separate and distinct project that does not increase or decrease the residential density of the existing housing park. The, and I'm sorry, I'm, you've just lost me now. Which question, which element of the criteria, I just want to make sure I'm addressing correctly.
We're going for Article seven, section C.
Right. But which question? I mean, which.
Variance, variance will not be contrary to the public interest.
To the public interest, okay. I just want to be sure I was answering the correct question. All right, so this would not be contrary to the public interest for this particular variance, taking into account whether or not it's going to alter the essential character of the locality or whether it's going to threaten the public health, safety or welfare. So the non-conformity of the lot has to do with the density that's in the existing manufactured home park. The character of the locality is really single-family homes on Bow Street at the end of the parcel where we proposed to put in these four lots, and then the rest of the lot consists of the manufactured home park. So what we're talking about is having residential to residential, so we don't believe that it's going to alter the essential character of that. And the, in terms of the public health, safety or welfare, the four lots that we proposed to put in will be adequately provided with its own source of water and sewer, so that, and it's, it all has proper, is properly sized, it has proper frontage and that kind of thing, so all of the newly created lots will not create any sort of health, welfare or safety issues with regard to those lots. And certainly, it will not do anything to increase the non-conforming aspect of the existing park because we are not proposing to increase the number of manufactured homes within the park. And also, the, and I don't know if this has really been addressed completely, but one of the things that I think you need to be aware of too is that the, in between the area where the existing homes are located, the existing manufactured homes, and where we propose to put the four lots, is an extensive area. It goes back to where we were talking about before with the well radius easements and so forth, but essentially, if you were to go into that park today and drive down a driveway, you can see it on your plans at the, at the edge of the, let me just see here, on the south side of Deer Run Lane, that driveway goes down a slope, and at the bottom of that slope, there's a large sign posted saying that the manufactured park owners, or homeowners rather, can't go beyond that point. So that the, this is effectively going, is open space right now. It functions as open space, and I think more importantly, they can't go beyond that boundary because of the important, you know, water systems that are in there and the leach field and so forth, so that by adding these four lots down at the other end of the parcel, fronting on Bow Street, nothing that currently exists in terms of how the existing homeowners are utilizing this lot is going to change by virtue of adding those four lots onto Bow Street. They can't use the property to the south of Deer Run Lane now, and that won't change if we put in these four lots. So in that regard, we believe that the variance for the non-conformity is not going to be contrary to the public interest.
Thank you. This, I have a little bit different wording, but the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Let me get the exact wording here. Use not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance because.
Well, and what I would say to that, as in my written materials, that the New Hampshire Supreme Court has said that this criteria is essentially the same as that of the public interest, so my answer to the public interest criteria that we just talked about would apply to the spirit of the ordinance.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because.
Well, this, this test has to do with a balancing and whether or not the. Well, this test has to do with a balancing, and whether or not the granting the variance to the applicant will be outweighed by any detriment to the, any individual or the public at large. We believe that there is going to be a benefit to the applicant because these lots are going to be able to be developed for use for single-family residences in Northwood. And in terms of any countervening detriment to the individuals of the public at large, we don't believe that there is any. We are unaware of any concerns or opposition raised by the abutters on Bow Street, and they would be, if anyone's, any individuals are going to be impacted, it's going to be likely them, and we've heard no opposition from them. Secondly, with regard to detriment to the public, this of course is going to be discussed further at the planning board level, but really, by virtue of having these four lot houses down there, that's not going to create any detriment to the public, and the public that is within the park itself is not going to be disadvantaged by having these four lots, because as I said a moment ago, the homeowners don't really have access to the southern half of the lot anyway, so.
The proposed would not diminish surrounding property values because?
The simple answer is that we are proposing to put in single-family homes in an area in which single-family homes already exist. It's a compatible use, and therefore, we don't see any diminution in property value.
Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because?
Well, we have to break this down into a couple pieces, as you know. The first is to talk about what the special circumstances are that distinguish this property from others in the area. First, I would start with the fact that the lot itself is very large, the geography of the lot, which includes this sort of middle area that I spoke about earlier, which has the water and sewer infrastructure, and which is really undevelopable for all intents and purposes. We have a pre-existing road down here on Bow Street which lends itself to some development down on the southerly end of the parcel, and another way of saying that is that you do have a portion of the parent lot which is capable of being subdivided, because we have created, other than the ideas that we're, or the relief that we're seeking tonight, we have created four lots which will be compatible with all of the zoning requirements. There is no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and the application to the property. This is an expansion of a nonconforming use ordinance that we're addressing right this second. The proposed subdivision does not increase the nonconforming aspects because the area to be removed, in other words, this eight acres, is not really usable by the park residents anyway, and therefore, the removal will not increase the existing sense of density in the home, in the park. As I've said before, the density that exists right now with these 15, 59 units is really not going to be affected one way or the other by virtue of putting in four lots down at the other end of the property. This is a self-contained universe, if you will, up here at the northern end of the property, and therefore, whatever's happening down here on the southern end won't create any additional perception of, or detriment in terms of perceived density. And as we've mentioned before, there is going to be no impact on the existing community while servicing the park, because each of these lots is going to have their own well. Finally, the proposed subdivision is a reasonable use of the property. It's been configured to front on Bow Street, and it's not going to be encroaching on the pre-existing leach fields to the north. And as I said before, we really have tried very hard to minimize any increase to the nonconformity by reducing the number of lots. We were originally thinking about five, and we realized that we just couldn't do that, and so we now have four. So in answer to your question, so those are the reasons why we believe we satisfy the hardship criteria on that variance.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I hate to do this.
Matt, could you, before you close, could you ask if there's anybody in the public?
Are there, are there any abutters that would like to take a moment, make a statement?
No.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to suggest that we continue this, unfortunately, till next month, so we can get everybody in in a timely manner. Are there any quick questions or comments from the board?
Could I just ask that we at least get a question and answer on this particular variance that I've just discussed? Well, things are fresh in people's mind. I'd hate to have to come back here and redo this, at least the portion that we've done, and then we can, you know, the, we really hate to have to come back here, but if we absolutely have to, then we would at least like to have some degree of closure on the pieces that we've done tonight. So if I could, I don't, I'm not looking for a vote.
Sure.
But I'm just looking for some discussion on the nonconformity variance.
I would contrast your points and counterpoints here with the use of the park, where the park residents are prohibited from using the region where the leach field and all that is, which kind of makes me question open space. I also have a question where you were saying that your argument earlier was about water being, because water is sufficient, that the zoning regulation shouldn't supply, and yet here you're saying that use of the land by the park residents, you know, doesn't matter, and I'm just seeing this contrast here. Also, the concept that there is no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and application to the property. Property density clearly has to do with people on property, and has to do with the quantity of people on the property. So by cutting down by eight, almost nine acres, we diminish the amount of acreage per person at that 59 trailer park, so I am having a difficulty here. For my part, I would rather not move forward to a vote right now, because I do want to look at the land, and I've already said that I didn't get a chance to really identify where it was.
Yeah.
So now with GPS, I can go and.
And I'm not looking for a vote either, but I, but again, I just want to.
And then down here on, the idea towards the end that it's a matter of right to subdivide the land, the land is Northwood, and the zoning rules that are voted on apply. So it's not something that we can just, I want to subdivide my land, it is within the rules. So I, on this, on this increase in the nonconformity, it's kind of difficult to get my head around taking a nonconforming lot and making it more nonconforming. So, and again, I've already stated my earlier concept of if you had the ability to be within the acreage in this wellhead region, why not be within the variance? So I'm not quite sure that I'm fully coming to grips with some of the contrasting points here. I do understand the water, and I'm not arguing that point. I think, I think you have shown that the water sufficiency is there. The, again, the question I have here is on residential density, which has to do with people in that water. So that would be my statement.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt for just a minute? I know they're looking for feedback, but typically, at this point, you would close discussion at the end of their presentation, deliberate only within the board, and have a motion on the floor for your comments.
Well.
That's true.
But that's.
I, that's true, that is typically how we do it, and it is a little bit different because we're trying to get a timely manner to get through some of these cases tonight. I think you got a book full of feedback from Pam, and I think at this point, I would have to go through some of my notes and go through some of your answers again anyway, and I think when we pick this back up at the next meeting, we'll do a brief overview again of this particular variance, so we can make sure that we're on the same page, and then go through a discussion and vote. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, and we wouldn't make you reread the whole thing?
No, no, it's on record already.
But I would assume that you're going to want me to still read the criteria relative to the two variances that I haven't addressed yet, for the density.
Correct, yep, we're taking those totally separate.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, one at a time.
So at this point, can I get a motion to continue this case to the next meeting, which would be November something?
Six.
Twenty-sixth.
Six.
Might even have five people at that point.
That would be nice.
Yes, the twenty-sixth.
Hold your breath.
What's the date?
November twenty-sixth.
Make a motion to, what is it?
Continue.
Continue, continue case eighteen dash zero four, Northwood Mountain View Development, to November twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
Before you vote on that, do you want to schedule a site walk where everybody would go, or how do you want to do that? Or do you want to just go as individuals?
Do we have permission?
If these folks are okay with you driving around?
We have permission to enter the property?
Hmm?
We have permission to enter the property.
That's what I'm asking.
I don't have any issue walking the property. I'd rather.
Do you want to be there when they're there, or?
I could be, if you can give me a timer, or.
If.
I don't have to be, if you just want to do it on leisure, that's probably the best thing to do. If you have a plan, and you want to walk it.
If they do a site walk as a group, then they would need to have it noticed and have it at a specific day and time, and you, you know, you would be free to come and.
From a public safety standpoint, I'd want to kind of walk you around, and, you know, make sure you don't fall in that hole.
It is convenient to have somebody that tells us this is, this point.
Which is.
It's up to, obviously, you would be more thorough.
Sure, daylight's an issue now, so what's everybody's availability during?
No idea.
No idea.
No, honestly, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I got.
Some days I got my daughters, some days I don't.
Yeah, weekends.
Just pick a day, and my bill go.
Weekends are fine with me. I love their weekend too.
In the backpack.
Saturday morning sometime, nine AM?
Saturday morning.
I won't be able to meet the weekends.
All right, okay.
How about a week from this Saturday?
Uh, Connecticut? I'm away.
Um.
Well, if you folks are not going to actually be, like, walking around the back of the park, or just maybe even just looking.
I would probably do a drive through the park, and would probably get out at that sign, just look, and I would be looking at the backside.
If you could stake it with an orange thing where the road frontage begins and ends, so when they drive down it, they can just look.
That would be easy.
That'd be a lot easier.
Yeah.
They'd just get a feel.
We could put stakes for the four lots.
Right, because we can, we can easily drive the park and look in at the leach field, and I see that you've got like a walkway there, if we walked through, you know, it wouldn't hurt anything, but I think the interest would be looking at the four lots.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can.
If you could mark it along the road, stake it.
Sure.
That would be the easiest thing.
So, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we need a concerted effort, it's convenient, it's great, but.
All right, so I have a motion on the table for continuance, and do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the date is?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
All right.
Nobody gets sick and nobody needs too much care.
And we just all have to make a concerted effort to make sure we get out there and see it.
We're going out there once already now.
I have trouble on the backside, Bow Street. I'm just trying to estimate.
Like, you know, as I drove down Bow Street towards where, in my mind, I thought these four lots were, I was expecting, I'm trying to get my hands to it, the mobile hangings to be closer.
All right, and I thank you for adding.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
See you in November.
All right, time-wise, we're going to move right on to case eighteen oh six, Ledgewood Realty Trust, Millstone Realty Trust.
Those are those big plans underneath there.
I was wondering if you had any big plans we could look at.
I wonder, should I go to my car for mine, or can I borrow one of these?
Plenty, just hang on to them because we need a first plan.
There's only really two maps. I'll try to change to them.
Eleven, twelve.
Would we say eleven twenty?
Six.
How close to Thanksgiving are they?
Yeah.
Do you want to do a property?
I don't know if I sent it to you.
Oh, you did it here.
The site walk that the.
Are these all the same, or are they all different?
All three things.
Same or different?
So I was just going to open it up.
Those are the same.
They mention a copy of a site walk by DES, but I could not open the document this morning to copy it tonight.
Yeah.
I wonder if, can you look it up and see if there was something?
Here, I didn't get it.
Oh, yeah.
Did you?
I don't know, I can look on my phone and.
Because you can't be in on this.
Yeah.
Okay, once again, I did not get into this, I didn't.
I wonder if I can download it because.
Unable to be, would be the term.
Hmm? Because it's an iPhone. I thought maybe because you said she did it on a, like a mess.
Oh.
I was thinking maybe because this is an iPhone, but.
Oh, maybe we don't have another case. I don't know, this one's my last. I gotta go on. If you want to get started, I gotta look up my computer. I guess maybe we don't have that other case, I don't know.
What do you mean?
Seven.
Sorry, we just got the conservation commission.
This is a special exception.
So, I have the barrier review because it's several different lots, so I'm just highlighting Does that look like all of them? Yeah. Yeah.
All right, here we go.
Yes.
Um, just state your name for the record and give us a quick overview of what's happening.
Sure, my name is Peter Holden from Holden Engineering. And, uh, what it came to talk about tonight and look for a special exception for was this piece of property. This is, um, Route Four on the right-hand side of the sheet. And this area right here is the existing, um, rock excavation, um, area and stockpile and scale house and material sale that David Daco runs here. And, um, he is getting to the end very quickly, um, the end of the material that's there available to remove and crush up and sell. And so, he owns this property. And the plan is to start similar operation out here as the extraction of ledge was out here. There won't be any sales out here, all the sales will continue, uh, in the existing location. And so, what he's looking to do is to remove material out here, bring it out to the front, put it in stockpiles and sell to people. So, um, there's existing roadway that goes out here, this orange line, and it crosses this little drainage. And currently goes up and goes this way and this way. Well, the road is pretty steep and it also goes through, um, uh, this is a road used by public service and everybody else has a dirt bike. And they just drive through the stream crossing. So, what we were looking to do was to cross this drainage. And what this is, is the outlet from this, this wetland, um, that collects water. It sits in here and when there's no flow, I mean, when there's no rain and it's not springtime, these drainages don't drain. But when there is, you get rain, water runs down and into this larger wetland here. So, what we did is we picked a location to cross both of these where it was the narrowest. And what we're proposing to do, uh, is to, um, bridge over them. There are two locations here, and there is actually one location out here. And I'll talk about these first and then we'll talk about this one. This is, um... This plan actually fits this way. So, you can kind of see how this goes. These lot lines right here are these lot lines here, and this power line is this power line going across. And so, the existing roadway comes up, um, like this, goes across and down the power line. And it comes up this way and goes down the power line. And it crosses, uh, this wetland right here. Uh, this is all wetland and wetland buffer impact. And the road crosses...
Can you see?
Uh, right here, um, currently, and goes through this, um, this wetland. And, um, people drive across this way. So, what we did is we proposed to move the road to this point where it's the narrowest. And there is a fairly steep grade to come up here, so we had to be careful where we put this. And instead of the road going this way, it's going to come up and go this way so that the crossing would be the narrowest there. And these, um, these, um, crossings are, are pretty narrow. They are, um, less than ten feet across, I mean, you can step across these, they're that narrow. And what we're proposing to do is build a bridge, uh, from the top of, there is a little bit of embankment there to define the channel. Uh, from the top of this bank to the top of this bank, and similar from the top here to the top here. So, we would, the plan is to put in a concrete abutment behind the, on the land side of the, um, top of the bank. Not disturb the bank, not disturb the stream, build one on each side, put a bridge across it, and build the road up to it. And do that in both of these locations. And we didn't include it as part of this application, but, um, after the site walk, we talked about it. And we're going to do a similar thing at this crossing, which, which in this, um, right up from Stephanie, she talked about, you know, having a structure that was big enough so the sunlight went in and, and produce could go through it. Well, it's going to be pretty big because it's going to be a bridge, it won't be a, it won't be a pipe, it won't be a culvert, it'll be a bridge there, so... And, um, so our, our wetland, a wetland buffer impact is twenty-eight hundred square feet on this side, thirty feet, five hundred square feet on this side. And we do have in the back, another wetland buffer impact. Do this, we'll just go back to this. On this plan, the road is in orange and the quarry area is in purple. And what we've done is we've left a hundred foot setback from all wetlands in here. So, we won't be any closer than a hundred feet to the wetlands. We have an area right here where a hundred feet from this wetland and a hundred feet from this wetland overlap each other. So, we can't get from here to here without going through the wetland setback. We're not going to go through any wetland, just the setback. So, that plan is this plan. This is, shapes this way. So, this, this wetland and this wetland are these two right here. And you can see this wetland buffer comes like this and like this, and they just touch each other. And we're trying to put a road through here, so we have sixty-five hundred square feet of wetland buffer impact in that area. So, those are the three wetland buffer impacts that we have. The, because we are spanning from the top of the bank to the top of the bank, we actually wouldn't be applying for a wetland permit. When I was out here with Stephanie, we walked around and talked about putting a culvert in. And since then, David and I have talked about it and talked about putting little bridges in. And, um, so there won't be any, any jurisdictional impact because we'll be outside the top of bank and we won't be down the bank or in the brook at all. And that's allowed by the DES regulations to do that.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Because we're looking at, uh, to the bottom of that map south, um, the additional cul, the culvert that's there?
Yeah.
That would need replaced.
Yeah.
Because that's not on the plan, do we need, would it be better to postpone this meeting until that is on the plan, so we vote all at once? Or would you have, would he have to come back?
He'd have to come back, but you can do it either way.
Okay.
You can hear this and vote on these tonight based on all the information related here. Or you may want to hear all the testimony and do a site walk between now and the next meeting because they'll have to come back anyway, for the other one at some point.
Yeah, we would submit an application pretty current, pretty quickly, uh...
Yeah. I think the concern with acting on a final decision tonight might be that, uh, if that in any way is tied to these other ones, but I don't know, that one depends on the other. But if it's necessary to have that first crossing, then you couldn't get to the others anyway, right?
Right.
Yeah, what, um, the original plan was to just fix the roads there.
Right.
And, um, so after we talked about it, we said, you know, why don't we just bridge over this? And then if the water goes over the road, goes over the road. And if it doesn't, it doesn't, because we'll be above the road and we don't really care what happens, so...
Okay, sorry. I was overcome by drought, it happened. All right, number one, questions? I was unable to get onto this property, um, even though we are allowed. I drove in one day and I could find absolutely no one. And I was just fearful of driving the car up and through, wasn't sure what kind of road I would find there. The second time I went, um, the dog was in the building, the door was unlocked, I knocked and yelled, couldn't see anybody, couldn't hear anybody. And then I noticed around the backside of one of the, um, gravel piles that there was an excavator working back there. And there was no way I was going to get out and walk around a site with active equipment where I'm not expected. Um, so I personally, um, for, for safety of us and going up through here and pointing out all this stuff, I would like a site walk. There's just no question in my mind that I need a site walk on this. Um, I also, having just been given the, um, Conservation Commission, um, information here, which cites specific references to the maps and, uh, to specific areas. And also the, the question of the, uh, wetlands permit, um, I, I need to do my research. So, I, I'm not prepared to move forward to a vote tonight for me personally. So, I need a site walk and I need time with this. Again, the, uh, with the special exceptions, um, the applicant has the burden of presenting sufficient evidence to support a favorable finding on each requirement. So, I, I need a little more here as far as time and information, particularly that site walk. Well, then, then maybe it'll work out. If you, you'd have to come back anyway, maybe we can get that site walk in...
Sure.
Before, and then we can get it all nailed down at once.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
And you need another piece on your map, so, um, that will help. And I, I, you have a copy of the conservation report? Um, it just, we'll be asking some questions, you know, specifically referencing this. So, is there any way that, um, a Conservation Commission representative could attend, just in case we have some specific questions?
I will ask.
Yeah, I think there's some...
And they will be, they will have to review and comment the additional thoughts.
Absolutely, because I have to understand, particularly the, um, the question here, the vernal pool, vernal pool testing, and also the question of that, uh, permit. So, I would, I would, I welcome their direct input on that. What, what does November seventeenth look like? Three weeks from Saturday?
For me, I think.
And I hate to do it on a weekend, but we just need day one.
Well, I hate, well, it's tough because I don't get home, I work overnights. I don't get home till eight, eight-thirty.
You can take lots of pictures. Eight forty-five, okay.
What time?
Eight point.
No, I mean, I guess if we do it, I mean, if we do it at like nine, I guess that's fine.
Is there another day, or? Yeah, is there another day to lunch?
It doesn't matter, you guys can take.
So, I can get out of work, so...
Whatever works out. I mean, I'm only down the street anyways from, uh, Daco, so it's fine.
Okay.
November seventeenth is a...
Saturday.
That's okay, that's right. November seventeenth at nine o'clock?
Nine, nine, nine works best for me because I can get home, change, and then head out, if that works for everybody else.
I can get to the job. So, site walk, um, Daco. Hopefully, somebody found, we can send a letter to Conservation Commission and see if somebody can be out there. And you're, you are the...
It'll be meeting before then, and they'll be hearing the other one.
Uh, nine AM? And you are the survey or engineer or surveying?
Yes.
So, is there an engineer involved in this at all, such as environmental engineer?
Yeah, um, we did the wetland delineation.
Okay.
I did the vernal pool, um, search and didn't find any, I'm a wetland scientist.
Okay.
And, um, spent quite a bit of time out there looking for it, found a dead coyote, but that's all I found. And, um...
Nine AM is what we set on? I, I ask only for those environmentally, um, questions that we would have. So, whether or not, um, if you have the credentials to answer those, that's terrific.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or would be, you know, maybe, maybe, uh, to have one handy that can, can answer those questions. So, nine AM, Saturday the seventeenth, a reminder. And forgive me, anybody else have questions or input or something that you'd like to bring up?
Information that you would like them to provide that hasn't been provided?
Right, I mean, it would be fair if I've said so now, if there was more information needed to be provided. For me personally, the site walk, answering your questions, the Conservation Commission, uh, and also I, the time to, to deal, due diligence. So, I'm, I'm looking up the information here.
Are there any details? I didn't go into the backend of all those plans. Are there crossing details been provided, profiled?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you have all that?
Uh, do you have the data from...
The bridges and the size and all that?
Yeah, they're shown, you know, they show...
In the back of the package.
Yeah, they're in the back of the package.
Um, the data from two thousand and nine ZP, ZBA, um, it said, um, that he was already granted a special exception in, in two thousand and nine. He just has to go back to his work and get it.
Yeah, I, I want to address that.
Explanation on that?
Because I'll address that, because there's some confusion there.
Yes, please.
I've read the minutes and there was something back in the minutes then that was very confusing. But I think there was some misunderstanding of what happened. There is a, uh, requirement that, um, there cannot be non-residential uses in that Conservation Overlay District. And this is a non-residential use?
Yes.
But they did come to the zoning board at the time and were granted a variance for that. So, that's done.
Okay, and that includes that, uh, um... Okay, and that includes that, uh, um, yeah, so, would we, would we be able to just see those minutes just ahead of her?
Hmm?
The two thousand nine.
We believe you.
I have, I have the notice of decision right here, somewhere. I have a big pile.
So, it's, it covers this, this entire area, or?
Yes.
I actually went back, we looked at, make sure that the notice included every single lot that's, um, that's included now, everything is the same. Um, there was an interest at that time in doing something back there, but then it was taken off the table, but the, the variance was granted for the, um, but I can email that out to everybody so they can see it.
And I would recommend too, that everybody, um, get up to date. This is, this is from our, uh, the two thousand seventeen municipal law. Um, it's got the really good write-up on special exceptions and, uh, what to look for and all that. So, it's good to, to know what, what our criteria is. Um, again, it has to match all the criteria, and if it does successfully match all the criteria, then we cannot turn it down.
Correct.
So, um, make sure you, you are specific on, on that and, um, and looking at the criteria.
And the, excuse me, the criteria you're talking about is on there's section, uh, Roman numeral six, eight, one through five?
Uh, yeah, I'm over on six seventy-four thirty-three in the, um, on the regulations, which are the five questions, I believe. Is it the five, the spirit, spirit of the ordinance, no?
No.
Is this a separate set of questions?
Yeah, we're, so, special exceptions, we don't ask those questions.
I thought we had to, whatever. Step forth in the ordinance, okay.
Yeah, there's three questions.
The condition step forth in the ordinance.
Well, each one is based on what's there. You ask the questions that are under that special exception.
Right.
As questions.
So, I mean, it's public safety, that, you know, spirit of the ordinance.
I think it's just five.
It's just five?
Under this one, no, it says, um, dredging, filling, or alteration should be designed to minimize, then they have to respond to that, there should be provisions made to restore the site.
Okay, I got you.
Then, there's a question on the state wetlands permit. Do you want, uh, something in writing from the applicant? From D E S stating that they do not need that?
I would prefer that.
Otherwise, it becomes a conversation division.
Yeah, it's like he said, she said, like, we don't need one, so.
I'm not sure that I can get the D E S to write up, uh, whether it says you don't need a permit.
Right.
But if you.
Yeah, I, I could get it.
We go in the administrative rules, and you go to.
Can you at least cite that in a memo or something for the board?
Yeah, and I'll just read it to you, if you have these, it's on page, it starts off with, um, sorry. It's, um, regulation three oh three dot zero five, and it goes A, B, C, D, E, and where R? And I'll just read it to you. It says, um, R is any stream crossing built landward of the top of one bank to landward of the top of the opposite bank so that, so as not to impact jurisdictional areas, which are from top of bank to top of bank. So, if you build it behind the top of bank, you don't need a wetland permit.
But, you're crossing the stream in another location than original, and you're also in a road gravel pit situation. I, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I'm, yeah, I, I believe you, but you're not D A, D E S, nor am I, or?
Well, I would agree with that, and I went to a, a workshop that it was set exactly, explained that way, because it used to be that that was not the case, they changed the rule. But I thought at one point there was a length, that was a maximum length you could span without, no, as long as it's, but I do recall that being said, that as long as it's upland.
Yeah.
However, the special exception is still required, because it's in our wetlands.
Yeah.
Zoning ordinance.
Hmm.
But he's saying he's exempt from the state wetlands permit.
For that one, would you need a wetlands permit?
No, because we're gonna build a bridge over it also. We would have if we took out the culvert and replaced it, but we're not gonna do that.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so, um, for the record, we'll plan on a site walk, November seventeenth at nine AM. And, and we will let the Conservation Commission know that we would like a representative there. You are updated, including your separate.
Yeah, we, we'll submit another application.
Okay.
And, um, I don't know, maybe this, maybe the Conservation Commission would like to go for another, although they've seen this, so.
Well.
But they just didn't comment on it, so, really.
Right.
I don't know if you're in, it, you know, it, we have done sight walks, we're planning, zoning, conservation, that type of thing.
Well, they're public, and if they wanna go, we'll just notice them to go.
Right, so, I mean, to, to get it all done, and, you know, everybody out there wants, rather than to reschedule everything, is a possibility.
They may wanna go just to hear what, you know, is being discussed. But they will make their comments before that site walk, so.
Right, we've read, we can't really talk to one another out there anymore.
Well, and also make their comments before then, but they will have their meeting, they'll hear, uh, Mr. Holden's testimony that he provides to them as to what he's doing there.
Okay.
Uh, because they meet the first week of November.
Um, you're on the docket for Thursday.
That's right, for the planning board.
Planning board.
Planning board.
So, that will be continued, I assume?
Right, I think that's probably just as well, can we just ask to be continued?
Yes, you can ask that right now. It'll make our weeks that much better.
That's magnificent, it's a lot of week better, but.
All right, um.
Can you just shoot me an email?
I will do that tomorrow, yeah.
Do you wanna go to November twenty-sixth again?
Yep, November twenty-sixth, six-thirty. Do I have a motion?
Motion for continuance to November twenty-sixth, six-thirty meeting, um, second on docket?
Second.
At this point?
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
You got a second, all in favor, any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If he passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, yep.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And we'll go right to case eighteen oh eight.
Eighteen oh seven, please.
I mean, I'm sorry, eighteen oh seven.
Okay, I will say that I received an email at five o'clock. I, apparently, there was an email sent previously, I, I couldn't locate it, but, uh, she did say that, uh, she was unable to get the engineer to finalize whatever they were doing.
She didn't have a certified copy of it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, we had no access.
She was mostly saying she thought she'd have to refile, but if you wanna continue the case, then she didn't have to resubmit.
Yeah, I say we.
Continuing.
I'm continuing to.
I'll second that.
May I suggest to the, uh.
We've got two cases that are gonna take long.
May I suggest to the board that you set a deadline to receive any new information? Because if the plan is changed dramatically, you're gonna want some time to look at it before your meeting.
That is a really good point. She's gonna have to mail it out to us, so.
Oh, Susan would mail it out.
Right.
If we set a deadline prior to the meeting.
Right.
Two weeks prior to the meeting?
So, for the information. So, you wanna put, uh, Justin said, uh, December, because, um, you've got two big ones with the twenty-sixth? Or is that too far?
Continue till December?
Or do you wanna go November? Because, right now, she's got to have two weeks to get her paperwork together and into us.
Yeah, and I think.
Okay, so, that would be.
I don't wanna say too much, but I think maybe it's a different engineer.
Oh, this is where the weird.
So, I don't know how long it might take.
So, December's date would be about?
Well, December's date would be Christmas Eve, so.
Be which date?
Or New Year's Eve.
Seventeen, I should be.
Christmas Eve.
Did you say seventeen?
The twenty-fourth and the thirty-first, but we, we were probably gonna talk about that tonight.
Put it back a week.
On the back way to the seventeen?
Unless you're gonna need on Christmas Eve.
I don't.
Don't worry about disturbing us, you can continue putting yourself up. December seventeenth.
This is, so is that okay to move to the seventeenth?
No, yeah, we, we decided December seventeenth.
Unless you wanna come on New Year's Eve.
We did already decide here, we decided that last meeting, Matt, sorry.
Did we?
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah.
It's, it's in the minutes, and we.
It's in the minutes, and you did.
And we voted on it. I was in charge, Matt, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for, um, a motion to continue case eighteen oh seven to December seventeenth, but any new paperwork be submitted by December third to the board, correct?
That's right.
That's the two weeks prior to the meeting.
Why don't you make it December one, because that's a typical.
December first. Okay, yeah, December first.
December first.
Which is a Saturday, which would be to the third.
Oh, the third, okay.
Third. So, I'm sure Justin just made a motion for continuance.
Well, actually, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, didn't he change it?
If you haven't voted.
No.
Because we got the, oh, no, we don't have a notice deadline, never mind.
Because this is a, this is continued.
This is a continued case, so we don't have to notice it. December seventeen.
Seventeen, you know, I even have it in my phone.
November thirty.
Eleven thirty.
Sorry, Matt, you just took over, Matt.
Hey, no, that's good.
Just have a deja vu of backspacing and re-typed it.
All right, so that was easy.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, good.
So, what's the final date, December one? So, when do we need to have it by?
December first.
Third.
Third, the third is fine.
But I thought you said first.
The first is a Saturday.
Saturday's the fir-, third? Thank you.
I said the thirtieth, or whatever.
Great.
Um, case eighteen oh eight, before I open it, just a gee whiz question, would you be okay with a three-person board?
With the understanding we have.
He's really ill.
I'm really ill as well, so.
Oh.
Yeah, he mentioned that to me on the email today, that he was very.
I'll be cool. So, it's, it's.
Okay.
I'm good.
Yeah, go, okay.
All right.
We'll look right along.
So, case eighteen oh eight, Norah?
Noria?
Noria.
Noria. Energy Corporation, one thirty-seven, first and Henshaw Turnpike, map, two thirty-four, lot fifty-two. Advocate seeks a special exception as specified in the zoning ordinance. Five section.
Did you guys get the copy of that?
Sorry, six section, six A four A.
The comments from the, the Conservation Commission for these?
For this one?
Oh, no, I got them right here.
Oh, darn. Special exception, see.
You put in a copy of that by email, perhaps. Yeah, he's got it, I think he's got it in front of him.
You have that?
I have one, thank you.
Good.
I like a nice sweet story like that.
And I just gotta find my.
Okay, so what we do?
Actual booklet? You guys are all.
Real quick.
Yeah, I know, I like.
Real quick overview of what you're trying to accomplish.
Sure, thank you. Uh, again, for the record, Patrick McLaughlin, I'm a civil engineer with M H F Design Consultants out of Salem, uh, here on behalf of Noria Energy. Uh, so, the site at the corner of, um, Route Four and Mountain Ave, uh, the existing Shell Station, was developed in the early two thousands. Uh, it's bounded in the rear by a lengthy retaining wall. Uh, you can picture Mountain Ave as sloping down as you head away from the intersection. So, the, the site is elevated above, um, a wetland pocket closest to Mountain Ave, and there's also some existing stormwater facilities and, um, the leach field out back down at a lower existing elevation. Um, so, the property owner has noticed that a section of wall up in here, this is being used for the car wash to orient yourselves, this is where the car wash is, drive-through lanes go around the rear of the convenience store. Um, a section of the, the retaining wall is, uh, actually begun to fail in this area here. Um, oddly enough, that's the furthest point from the wetland resource area and your local twenty-foot buffer. So, if it was just located to that one area of concern, it wouldn't be here. However, in visiting the site and speaking with the geotechnical engineer that we have onboard, we're looking to not only fix the area that has failed, but shore up the remaining sections of wall to prevent any future failure. If you came in and walked down behind here, which is thickly brushed at this point, again, you're talking about an overgrown detention basin that's fifteen years old, you could stand at the base of the wall and look up, and you'd notice that it's, you know, bowing out and, um, in various states of failure or potential failure. So, the plan is, and, and again, still working with a, uh, geotechnical engineer to finalize that stabilization method, but what we propose to do is a, is a one and a half to one riprap slope, basically buttressing the, the wall from the bottom up. So, what you see on here, so that the dark line, um, is the location of the retaining wall, the other lines are, um, contour lines showing that slope. So, at a one and a half to one slope, the wall is about, um, twelve to, to fourteen feet high and through this area here, so the, the green highlighter is the, um, is the wetland resource area itself. This yellow highlighted area is proposed seven hundred and fifty square feet of impact. Uh, and then the blue is the, the buffer zone. So, um, by the time you get to the base of this proposed riprap slope, we'd be down into the resource area, which necessitates the impact. We discussed with some contractors, as well as the geotech, um, about doing a redundant wall. So, basically, build another wall directly in front or behind, depending on how you wanna orient yourself, in front of the existing wall, and fill in between them with crushed stone, and now one wall holds up the old wall and, and go that way. Uh, basically, what we figured out was, you're gonna end up with the same footprint in terms of, by the time you, that new wall gets built out in front of it, and you have, you know, the necessary batter, those big gravity blocks are, are large blocks on the bottom course anyways, and the amount of room, again, to construct a system similar to that, we'd end up basically looking at the same amount of disturbance. So, thought being, uh, practicality-wise, because we're isolated down below this wall, we do have limited ability to, to access from Mountain Ave, so the plan is, construction access is actually gonna sneak in down here behind the, um, the car wash. So, we're looking at this slope treatment, and that geotech is still working through that. At first, we thought it might be some type of gravel core with specific compaction requirements and this and that, and, um, the most recent conversations have actually just been a mass of, of large, um, riprap stone, which would be actually really great, uh, because you wouldn't have the, the sediments and such that we'd be concerned with, you know, in the construction period. You know, if you just dump and drive large-scale stone in there, uh, you can really manage that risk pretty well. So, that's the plan. Additionally, because of the, again, the toe of the slope where it stretches down to at the base of the wall, um, would impact slightly, uh, the stormwater basin that's down there. So, the, the regrading that I've shown, uh, I checked in HydroCAD to, to look and see the stormwater hydrology characteristics of, of how that's going to operate, to make sure that we're not changing, you know, the discharge out of the, out of the pond to the resource area. So, I've checked into that to match the characteristics of, of what was done before, and show that grading accordingly. Obviously, need a, a D E S permit, so, Go Over Environmental has already filed that permit. We do have a D E S file number, if you want that for the record. It's file number eighteen dash oh three oh six six. So, they have received it and assigned a number, but the review hasn't begun, it's still in the queue. So, anything we do here would still be pending that approval ultimately anyways, which would probably be another few weeks out. The, yeah, the Conservation Commission has reviewed this, we saw them earlier this month. Um, they didn't seem to have too much concern with the buffer. Uh, the seven hundred and fifty square feet of wetland impact was a number that I had on hand at that meeting. Um, what I did not have readily available to me was the actual number for the buffer impact. And so, that's thirty-seven hundred and fifty square feet, so again, that's the blue highlighted area, and that includes everything up to our proposed silt fence line. Uh, so, there'd be room below the, below the slope for necessary construction equipment and access, things like that, but it would all be bounded by, um, erosion controls. So, that's really, that's what I have, so, one happy name. So that's really, that's what I have, so won't happen to answer any questions. I did address the five criteria that were in section six, A four, within the written language, I can go through that, I don't have the actual five criteria in front of me, I could read them out of a regulation if we have those, but...
That's okay, I think if you just, Mr. Ruder, does anybody have any questions before you begin?
You said you're going to be replacing the wall that's pretty much falling down, and then just going to repair or fix, you know, whatever else needs it? Do you know how much needs to get fixed or repaired?
So, again, within the furthest point, it's about a hundred linear feet right now, the failure's probably localized to more like, I'd say sixty feet of that, but that whole section, for all practical purposes, looks ready, although it's not toppled over on itself, is, is in a very near, nearly same state. So when we spoke with James and Linda late this summer, when we first came up to discuss what we had going on, the thought there was, if it's a replacement, repair situation, you know, just work with the building department, doesn't really have any impact, certainly has no impact on the resource area or the buffer. James is having us go to the planning board for a site plan amendment to reflect the grading changes and the changes to the stormwater basin, but otherwise, again, if it was just localized till we could repair the one spot that we knew had failed, I think this would just be a building department issue, but it's more the, let's make sure we do it right now.
I'm looking over the criteria, the only thing, oh, we already talked about that. Conservation Commission gives you the okay, dredging, filling, or other alterations shall be designed to minimize adverse impact, we've discussed that, provisions made to restore the site as near as possible, can you just briefly talk to me about that?
Yeah, so that's, you know, and that's certainly, when you're filling a wetland area, if you're filling it, it's not going to be restored exactly how it was, otherwise it would be a temporary impact with a restoration plan included. I think that gets back to, to what the hopeful end result with, with the geotechnical stamped design is, that really, if we're talking about a mass of large diameter angular stone getting placed in there, which is really just, you know, a mass of, of holding up, you know, the wall, you know, there's voids within the stone, any stormwater that, you know, rainwater that lands on it, it's just going to make its way straight through to the bottom, you know, as it does, so it's not creating a runoff concern, again, if it's, if it is indeed the, the stone is not, is, you know, a erosion control concern, in my opinion, where if we, if we do end up in a scenario where it's an earth core, then certainly that construction sequence is going to be critical, that these erosion controls are really, you know, in place. I don't see it going that way at this point, indications are all that we're, we're likely going with the, with the riprap. But either way, the surface treatment itself would be riprap, so you wouldn't, it's not going to be like a hydro-seeded slope that you'd be looking at at the end of the day, it will have riprap on it regardless, it's just what that core material is, that I would have any type of concern, that during construction, we'd really need to be monitoring that, because if you get a rainstorm, when you get half of a slope built right next to a wetland, then that's where you'd want to be, you know, prepared for that.
In your wetland permit, you had the number of? And, so, you just mentioned criteria for a permit, notification, administrative rules, so you're not, what's PBN criteria, I'm sorry, what's PBN?
Permit by notification. I think that number five asks, is this a permit by notification? Has a DES term, and if Luke from GOV Environmental was here, he could get all into exactly what that is, but this impact isn't qualified for a permit by notification.
Thank you. So if I may, I'll make a motion.
You want to close and discuss?
Are there any butters? You did that on purpose. Is there any further discussion before I close public comment? At this time, I'll close public comment for discussion, if there's any.
No, no discussion really, other than, you know, as, as looking at the special exception, I think he's met the criteria that we needed to see. This does need to be done, there is no question there, that it's got to be fixed.
May I make a suggestion? You may want to consider putting an end date on when that state wetlands permit is obtained.
Sure.
Otherwise, it's kind of just hanging out there.
When, when was it filed, do you remember?
It was filed like, like the day before we filed for this.
So almost a month ago.
Yeah, it was about a month ago, and Luke seemed to think that it would be probably a permit we'd receive in December, then again, with DES, it's just when they get to the queue, they get to the queue.
Six months.
Anyway, disclosure on the end of it?
That's a good point.
And it's in the record.
So I'll make a motion to approve or grant the special exception, seeing that the conditions have been met, with the condition that six months from today, there is a wetlands permit issued. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Hope you feel better soon.
Yeah, totally, totally hope you feel better.
And at this point, I know we might have some internal business, but we leave Justin from voting.
Yeah, thanks for attending.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Please, thank you. You've done very well.
The record, Justin and I slept out.
Yeah, you look, you look a little yellow there.
So this is you, the new voting resignation.
Have you, have you, have you meant? What? No? You know something, Rita?
No.
I'm still trying to get my brother-in-law to do it, because he's a surveyor.
Johnny?
Yeah.
He's a little well-referenced.
I know. But he'd be really good to be able to look at the places, and, he might have to recuse himself quite a bit, but he would have a really good...
Yeah, yeah.
See you, guys.
Bye, see you.
Might have to...
See you, November seventeen.
Or something.
You have to do that, we don't.
We have looked everywhere. Just so the board knows, I did check with both Tom Johnson and Curtis Nowitzki, if they could sit in on some cases until we...
They're swamped, I bet, right?
They have, they're both busy.
Pitch in. I was actually thinking of writing a letter, putting it in the sun, just explaining what we do. I think there's a big, huge communication gap between what we do and what the public thinks we do.
Go for it, we'll get it done, we'll get it in.
But it's hard to pitch a finkless job, please come help us.
This is camera running.
Public service.
So I'll try to draft that, maybe you can, like, proofread for me, but just, I know that when we all got together, at that huge meeting, communication was one of the biggest issues, and rather than us looking like bad guys all the time, really try to enlighten people of what we're trying to do, and that we're trying to help people, rather than to deny people.
I don't think there's any intention to be a bad guy.
No, no.
A lot of times, it, it...
But people hate us, they do it.
It seems antagonistic, but it isn't.
We're still in.
I think it's just doing diligence.
It was, um, level funded, right?
Yeah. I think we're just doing diligence, we're doing what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, I deleted that after.
And I think that's sometimes what people don't understand.
I thought I took it off.
Right.
But it's tough when, when you go into the supermarket, and you go, hey, how's it going? And you realize...
I didn't think there was one hey, but I know that...
I'm lucky I don't get that, although I'm sure I will.
I have trash pickup now for the first time ever in my life, just so I can avoid the dump.
Yeah, again, it's, it's, I think we do, we're doing this because we volunteered and we believe.
No correspondence, no internal business. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Nope, seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're done.